Call this meeting the county wishers order, please join us in the flesh. My flag is a legend to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Good to see you all. First thing we'll take care of is we have advertised a public hearing at 2:00 today for the consideration of ordinance number 2024-03, which amends ordinance 2021-08 pertaining to building permit fees. We have here a copy of the ordinance as it was presented to us a couple of weeks ago with the fee schedules, which is too long to read through all this meeting unless someone has any questions, comments, or concerns about it. So the purpose for this hearing is to allow anyone that has anything to say about the ordinance before it's considered to speak on it. So is there anyone here to...wants to say anything about this ordinance? Anyone? Okay, either one of you two have any comments you want to make about it?
I just feel that it brings it closer into, like, word reality with how it should be. It brings the fees closer to where maybe it will help get more business to look at building or moving to the community.
It does make it less expensive for people that are doing projects. Now, these fees are more...now, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Jeff, since we're our attorney. The square footage of the actual projects is the main multiplier in these fees, correct?
On those type of projects, correct.
Okay. And it was through the research that we've heard about and that Bill McDaniel has done, that puts us more in line with the major number of counties in Indiana who also follow this same procedure.
That's correct.
Anything else? Okay, last call. Anyone in the room have any comments about the ordinance on fee schedules? Okay, we need a motion to close the hearing. Yeah, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is now closed. Do you want to take the matter up for final consideration now?
Make motion to approve this ordinance number 2024-03.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve ordinance number 2024-03. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Motion passes. Did we just finish this ordinance up here, Jerry?
Oh, that's fine. I don't really want to be here anyway.
Okay. I don't blame you.
Yeah, I can just get a copy, Jane. Copy and put it in my box. I appreciate it. Thank you. Man, that was easy.
Okay. Minutes of our previous meeting, if we had an opportunity to read the minutes of our previous meeting.
Yes.
Any additions or corrections?
No.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the minutes from our March 5th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Okay, first up on our agenda today is representing the Health Department is Matt Schurk. You got a message with you?
Yeah, I'm here today with Melissa Kavanaugh, our public health nurse. She's going to speak to you about the project we're proposing. So if you want to go ahead and take it or...basically, we are considering having a health fair, and she's going to tell you more about it. I think we're going to try to coincide it with the farmer's market when it's going on. We haven't really...we ran past some people with farmer's market, not all of them. I know Jill explained to you more what we're proposing, but I think we were wanting to see if we could use the county's parking spots over by the city lot to set up for a health fair, but she's going to tell you more about it. So go right.
So like Matt said, we want to have a health fair, and we're like shooting for...the tentative date that we really want is the first day of the farmer's market, which I think is like June 1st. But we'd like to have it over here in our parking lot, and then maybe use that first strip that's, I think, county, that first strip, the parking lot, just maybe if we need some overflow. We're just going to try to like...our main purpose is to have like an immunization clinic. So when we started talking about, we decided, well, why not have a health fair? So that way, we're just going to try to reach out to all age groups and offer and promote like any health services or any safety services, you know? And just have them set up with booths with like information and do demonstrations and some games and things like that. So we want to just try to, you know, get the public engaged in, you know, being healthier and stuff like that, since we have the Governor's Health Commission, he's, you know, started this year and everything, so...which a lot of it will cover like the key point indicators that we're trying to engage in and stuff. So that's really about it. I mean, we would...I think the time that we wanted to shoot for was like 9:00 to 12:00, just the same hours as like the farmer's market. And we don't need any great big bells or whistles. It's mostly just going to be informational booths and hopefully just have some people have some games and be able to hand out like some promotional prizes and things like that, so.
We're going to try to get a lot of the school kids and stuff like that to come in early to get their vaccines. She's going to have prizes available and giveaways for kids that come in and get those.
Yeah, yeah, we want to try to entice them. We're going to give away a family pool pass to the park, so that way...it's always kind of a battle at the first of the school year to get the kids in and get them compliant with their immunizations with the school corporation and stuff. So we've been, the last couple of years, really trying to get them in, where it's just not a big rush there in August. So with a couple, you know, a couple giveaways and hopefully that we can have like the other vendors and stuff have some stuff that'll entice, you know, not only the kid age groups, but like some elderly. We got...I know in the department that we're going to have a tent, too, and we have like some blood pressure cups that we can give away and things like that. So Jenny McCarron with Firefly, I was talking to her about it, and she has a great big resource list that she emailed out, and so with her help, that, you know, hopefully it'll be successful. So that's what we're asking for, is for that date most times. Yeah, this Saturday, yeah.
That's a Saturday, so it shouldn't really interfere with courthouse business, so.
Is that also the first day for farmer's market?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there might be a train that day as well, so there might be private going on around the area, but I don't think it's one of the up there popular train rides.
Yeah, and I don't think their first train, I think they looked up, it doesn't go out till like 12:30, so hopefully it doesn't have too big of a conflict or anything.
It'd be a nice day to kind of coincide everything together and get some people in.
Okay, so you want to use the narrow strip out here that the county owns?
Right.
And then this parking lot over here.
That, too?
Yeah.
You can have the front lawn, too, if you want.
Yeah, we still haven't got everything planned out, but there might be possibly a bounce house or something.
Yeah, this is like real early stages, but I wanted to get the permission first before we start to roll them in.
It might be what we just need the side in the front, but we might need some of the space over here, too, because especially trying to get them into our office on this side might be a better option to have it over here or stuff.
Yeah, we want to try to keep like the kids closer to our office. That way that parents do decide to, you know, bring them in, we'll be right right there, and we can look at their immunizations on the trip record and stuff and just that...because we used to transport the vaccinations to little Spartans. They had them around them. And that just gets to be too much transporting those vaccinations. It's just...it's just too much high risk and too much red tape that we got to go through and stuff. So it's just easier just to try to get people down here.
Are y'all going to advertise it, too?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to try to advertise it with the paper and Channel 3, and hopefully the school corporation might let us advertise something on their TV, their little TV station and stuff. So, yeah, we...and plus, we have Facebook at age.
I make a motion to approve the health fair for the Health Department for June 1st around 9:00 to noon, or however long that is, seeing as our space here that we've got.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the county health fair on Saturday, June 1st, with permissions to use any of the courthouse grounds that you may need. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Is there anything else we can do to assist?
Do you need me to come back with any other details or anything like that, or?
Now, you might want...I'll have these two help you set up tables and stuff.
Well, I think we were going to have everybody bring their own tables, though I just didn't know if you just needed like an update on like who was going to be coming and stuff, because I mean, the mailing list that Jenny shared with me is like 70 people, and I was like, oh, well, I don't think we could do that many people, but, you know, it's kind of a sort of, you know, first come, first served, and we'll figure out how big the space that, you know, that they'll be comfortable in at least, so.
Well, the last one you had turned out to be a lot of fun, I think, for a lot of people, so I think this one should, too.
I thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Van Meter is here from 911 Department with some locations for some headsets.
Yep. Been outside, but I'm back. So Michael King took this project over a little bit at the time that we were talking about the headsets, so all these quotes was what he got for me. Just because, too, with his IT background here, he can kind of juggle the price a little bit different in that respect for that. So we have headsets. They are crappy. They're obsolete. We got new headset battery bases when we got all of our stuff integrated over there with the new radio and new 911. So now we're going and getting the ones that are compatible to that new base. Plus, like I said, the other ones that we did have from years, a few years ago, they're obsolete, so we're going to have to branch out. Now, on these quotes, Michael did it for 10 people, but I need it for 15 is the only difference on these quotes. He just was randomly putting in an amount to get some quotes back for us. They all look fairly about the same price, give or take a little bit of money, it looks like, but he asked for the same headset through all the quotes, so there's no difference on the headset that he asked for. Again, he asked for 10 on these quotes, and I'm needing 15 because I'm one that I don't want to share a headset with somebody. It's too much of a...everybody's got something. I'm sorry, but...so basically, these headsets would be assigned to a person, and they would be in charge of keeping them up to par, and upon maybe leaving the job, they'd have to obviously turn them back into us the way they got them. Any questions on these?
Well, and these are all for the...
Same headset.
The Hewlett Packard 710.
It's the Poly Encore 710.
Yeah.
And like I said, I took the information in order to get these quotes, the information came from the ECS radio guy. He was the one that led us to this particular headset to work with the radio system and be a good headset to use. And basically, the headsets and what we've been...what we do, they'll cancel out a lot of the background noise and dispatch, so like if we are toning out EMS and they're talking to us, and then we got an officer on the other frequencies talking as well, so when we key up for EMS, EMS sometimes, you know, a lot of times if we're busy, will hear that other traffic, so then the agencies will have to tell us, you know, we can't hear you because of the background. Or the microphones are very sensitive in there, so if you're just walking into dispatch and somebody's keying up, they're going to hear that person come in and, hey, you know? So we're just getting away from the background noise and dispatch to make the compatibility of hearing traffic really good for everybody, agencies alike. It covers the one ear, so that we always have an ear open for the phone. 911 phone is integrated in this headset, so how that happens is when 911 answer or rings, we just answer it. It'll be in our headset. The person will be, get their information, but then when we key up on the radio, then that headset will mute automatically the 911 person. So you'll say, stay on the line with me. They will. You'll mute, and you'll start people...of course, in the other...what we usually do is one person's doing the toning and everything while we're taking the information. But again, if you happen to have to do some of it all on your own because we're busy, then it'll mute that person and you can talk freely. And then when you're off the radio, then it'll open back up that line for you to continue to talk to the caller. We cannot integrate the headsets into the admin line because the admin line is owned by the city, and they're on a different...Michael's telling me that they're on a different phone situation that we can't put admin into those headsets. It's nothing wrong. It's just that the city does a different...has different billing or different something. We can't...the phones don't work that way, but that's fine. 911 and the radio is good for us to have. Those are priority. And all these...and this headset will do the job.
And all these were the same exact headset?
Again, this was information given to me by my radio vendor, who installed our radios and who does service on them, is where I got the information on which one to go for. And again, it would be the quantity of 15, and my budget does support what I'm doing. I won't have to ask for any money. I have money in my account, in my budget.
Looks like the Southern Computer Warehouse Company has the best price, then.
Okay. He was here, but he's not...I don't...
I just wanted to...has he dealt with this company before?
These are the thing...these are the companies that he has bought stuff from before, is what he told me when he was going to go after the quotes, because I asked him if he was just going to go to Amazon and we needed two more. So he does use...he has used the connection and the SCW before.
Well, looks like then for 15 of those, it was a $1,051, $20, from the Southern Computer Warehouse.
For the $70.08 each, yeah. That's what I had wrote down, so.
So I make a motion to approve that to purchase from there.
Yeah, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the purchase of 15 headsets for 911 Dispatch Center from Southern Computer Warehouse of Marietta, Georgia.
Right.
Any further question? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. There you go, Kelly.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Okay. APC Director Bill McDaniel, Bill, do you have anything?
I don't have anything other than that, as the only thing I'm still here for is because of the construction standards to go ahead.
Okay. EMA Director Wade...
Got nothing today.
Okay. Highway Department, Jay, do you have anything?
Okay, I went down to Franklin County like you asked me and talked to the boss down there, and they said first they were going to take and put detour people down Bentley Road and come back on Shea Road, but then they got to think about how narrow and crooked Shea Road was, and it's got a drive for it down the bottom of it. They're going to keep it going straight on to Bentley, onto us. I thought that's fine, as long as we knew it ahead of time, so we could try to control it a little bit. And he said he'd go along with that, and we can take that. Bentley Road's in good shape. Everton Road's in good shape, and we can run it right back out to Everton Flash and Light, take them out, back out on the highway. And all we got to do is put our signs back up and put some detour signs up with it when they do this. They said they won't start that project there for that one until November, because the one they're working on first is down by the veterinary clinic down there in Brookville, where they're taking all them trees down. You know what I'm talking about?
Right down in the holler there, right into coming to Brookville?
Yeah, they're doing that one down there, and that's going to take the longest, and they'll move straight up there and start on the next one. They figure it'll take between, you know, start in September and end in November, is what they're figuring.
On the first project or second project?
The second project. That's...that'll be...that one would affect us. First project, they're just detouring down around by the golf course and that down there and coming back on 101. As far as they won't start till September. I said November, I'm sorry. September, then we end in November.
Okay, so it'd just be a short-term...
Yeah, they figured three months.
Well, Franklin, so that everybody understands what we're talking about here, Franklin County has been notified that State Road 1 is going to be closed in two locations in Franklin County again, and we experienced this last year with the local detours, done a lot of damage to local roads. One of their projects is going to cause Bentley Road to be used as a local detour again, so we'll wind up having to reinstall the lower speed limits, and if we designate that as the unofficial...the unofficial detour...
Yeah, it'll be unofficial, but they will...if you get to...tear it up, they'll replace it. They'll repair it.
Yeah, we can put in for damages to repair the roads once all is done, in case we incur that. Don't we have to videotape that prior? Do we have to videotape that road prior?
No, they said...he said they'd come down and check it before they started to see what it looked like, and I guess they'll tape it. We know what kind of shape it's in. It's in good shape. There are a few spots that need spray pass, but we'll get that as soon as we can, because we'll have time to get it before they start on it.
Well, if they say that they will stand good for damages, I'm quite sure they will...they'll make sure they know what it looks like before and after, sure.
Oh, yeah.
So we're looking at September, then, before...
September till November. Sometime in November, it'll be done, is what they're saying.
Okay. So it's not necessary for us to make any declarations today?
No, as long as we...we'll have to notify...when he gets ready to notify him where he's going to do the detour, we have to notify him at the same time, that we'll carry it on around to...backed out to 1.
All right, then.
Because they...some people were taking 750 over to Big Bear Road and going down that big steep hill into the highway, and I don't see why anybody would want to take a truck down that thing, because you're about standing on your head down every time you get down the road, aren't you?
All right, then. We can file this away and be ready for it when it happens. Thanks for checking up on all that.
I put a...I turned a 144 in for Chuck Orshell to try to bring him back to do the mowing and spraying and driving the truck, and I'll take it to the council at their next meeting. He said he'd rather come over and work over here than go to Union County and Wayne County. They both offered him a job up there, but they all want him to work full-time, and he don't want to work full-time. He said if he gets 32 hours a week, he's lucky. He'd be tickled to death.
How many hours have you been using him?
How many hours is...
How many hours a week have you been using Chuck?
Well, we used him. He didn't like working the 410s because it kept him 10 hours a day. He don't like working 10 hours a day, but we could get by with eight hours a day on him on 410s. He could start after the buses quit running, and you'd have to worry about him. He'd go ahead and mow, and whatever else we're doing. He did the spraying, too, for us on the weed sprays and stuff like that.
Yeah. When do you usually start him?
We'll probably start him first of May, when they go to 410s.
Okay, what's your plan? You can act on it today, or you can put it off till next meeting, or you can do whatever you want to.
What's his title? Do you have to have a title for him technically?
He'll actually be part-time, but he'll be part-time truck driver and equipment operator, more or less, because he's done both. He likes running that back wing mower with all that John Deere, is what he likes doing.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the 144 request from the Highway Department to hire Charles Orshell, part-time summer work. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. There you go.
Okay, I got something else for you. I'll show you these. We got a call from McDivitt's up there, on this up there. I think they're all...yeah, they're...you should pass them around because there's only one set of pictures. We haven't went up and cleaned it up yet. There was just a conservation officer wanting us to clean it up, that you see with all the tires in there, Dale?
Yeah.
And this is what it costs us to get rid of the tires we hauled off, and three truckloads of tires.
Is that up on 440 North?
Yes, right there by the bridge, right where that drop-off is. They go down to the river on. There's three different bills there, Dale. They don't even like taking the tractor tires. They're $100 feet when you try to get it out. And we had a...we had three truckloads, there's still another truckload down there yet, because they told us to quit because they didn't have a place to put them. That's how big a pile we had down there. That's just what we pick up on the roads.
Now, these invoices are stuff that you've already cleaned up?
Yep, that's something we hauled away from the garage out there wherever they had a pile at. Because when it starts getting warm weather, we find that many more. Because when it starts getting warm weather, we find that many more. It don't take long to build them up.
Bill, what's that bridge number out here, this bridge on one fifty? We've had the work done on recently?
Oh, uh, forty-four.
Forty-four. There's a pile out there that reads forty-four too.
It don't surprise me. Unless somebody calls us and tells us where they're at, we get them right away. We'll find them eventually, but I ain't got, the man fire sent them out looking for tires all the time and there's always a bunch out there. It's like these are way down in them woods down in there. They're gonna be a barrier to get out of there.
Well, are they in the right of way or are they on McDivitt's property?
How far down would that right of way go, Bill?
I don't know. Is it close to the bridge?
There's a fence down there at the bottom where they're, where they're up against.
I'm not sure. I don't know. If we block right away on that bridge or?
That's all I wanted to do, bridge.
We're sold now. They'd have by right of way, but I don't know if we, what kind of right of way.
I thought about taking a couple of concrete blocks up there and blocking that road due to down under the bridge, so they'll quit going down there and party on.
Yeah, I don't know. Is that in the right, if it's not in the right of way, then we don't need to have to clean it up.
I'll let the county attorney see these. See if you've got any advice on that. My normal reaction, Jay, would be if, if they're on private property, we're not responsible.
Yeah, we don't, if they're down in a ravine, we don't touch them. But being there's a fence down there, I wasn't sure how far we took care of that.
Honestly, I don't know how wide the right of way is out there.
I don't know on the bridges.
Bill, you would have that on record, wouldn't you?
I can second this, county. I should purchase the right of way on the bridge, Bill.
What would you do, Jay?
Well, I'd first see if it's in the right of way or not. I mean, I don't know if we can do much until we know that answer anyway. If it's in the right of way, then I would say that you don't have an affirmative obligation to pick it up, but if you want to, let's clean it up.
Moving to step up on top, the top of the pictures, there's no problem getting that, but when you gotta go down there and get next to the fence down there inside them trees, it almost just easy to cut the trees down, just so you can get stuff out. And grow it up as it is down through there. And I think, if I remember right, the property owner suggested cutting the trees down so they could see when people was dumping there. So I don't know.
Do you want it cleaned up is the first question?
I think we should, but I think we need to find out where the right of way is before we go any farther.
If you want to call me, Bill, when you find out what it is, then we'll go from there. And I'll clean it up. We'll get you, we'll do something with it. Try to stop them going down there if we can.
Well, seeing those bills and what we've paid to get rid of what you picked up, I can understand why people
Yeah.
take them out and dump them.
There's such a variance in what they charge for each different one. Like car tires on that paperwork were five dollars, then you, when you, the time you got up to a truck tire, it was, it was twenty dollars, but when you got to a tractor tire, it went to a hundred dollars. Because they don't want them. They're too big.
Yeah.
What are you supposed to do with them? You're not allowed to purr them anymore.
Yeah, well, we're told all the time that this stuff gets recycled, but I don't see any evidence of it, so I don't know. We'll, we'll see what Bill finds out, if he can locate the the right of way up there.
We'll go from there.
We, I sympathize with McDivitt's because we, we can't be responsible for cleaning up private property. And if we could find out who done that, you know, they could be charged with illegal dumping for sure.
Well, the game warden did make a comment that he was gonna put a game camera up, try to catch who's doing, who's doing it up, so we'll see.
Okay. All right, did you have anything else?
No, I think that covers it.
Either one of you got anything for Jay?
What'd you decide to do on the camper down there thing?
We, we didn't, I don't think.
Okay.
Do we need to post that, that no camping or?
Certainly could.
Yeah.
I don't believe there's any type of signage down there, is there?
They, they've run them off before down there.
Sheriff run them off in?
Down the fort.
Can you put a sign, can you put a no camping sign down there, highway?
I don't know if there's a sign down there or not.
I don't think there's a no camping sign, not that I recall. But if there isn't, we could put one there.
I mean, you don't mind a person coming in there for overnight while he's fishing, but when they start staying there two weeks, a little much.
Yeah. Well, is it your feeling that we, you don't want permanent camping? Okay. Who wants to talk to the fellow, you or the sheriff?
He carries the gun.
We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, that, I'll take care of that. And you're gonna place some of those concrete blocks?
Yeah, we'll put two of them down there, give them just enough space they can get through with the canoe, with the canoe ramp and that'll stop them driving down there.
Okay.
Okay. That'll work.
All right. Thanks, Jay. Sheriff Jones, did you have anything you wanted to discuss with commissioners today?
Yes, sir. The vehicle, we, we finally got the lights and everything else in. I think they delivered some stuff to County Highway today, but hopefully we'll have Josh in one of the old trucks within the next couple of days. So I won't have to listen to him cry no more. And also, I got a quote for mobile radios. Joe Lisa said I had to come here and tell you guys about the quote. The vehicles now don't have mobile radios in them. We work off of portables just because these radios are so expensive. Joe Lisa got a grant through, I think it's the JAG grant. It's a hundred percent. They pay for everything. So we partnered with the city police and we've got a quote here to, to get fifteen mobile radios for all of the sheriff's department vehicles at the cost of forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. This is through VEI. We've done business with them in the past and we're happy with them. The other quote was from another company. It was the same price for the same radio. But we've done business with VEI before, so Joe Lisa said we could go with these guys. And then this is for a Kenwood radio. We also got a quote for Motorola that it was about twice the price, so. We've, the city and us have decided to go with the Kenwood price. So I just need to, just get your approval to tell Joe Lisa to go ahead and purchase these.
Are those dual-band?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Yeah. It's not, it's not the fanciest radio they have, but it's, it'll do what we need it to do.
Okay. You say the grant has been awarded?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move that through. We have a motion by Dale Second-Matresi to approve the purchase of radios from the sheriff's department vehicles. According to the grant stipulations, is that okay?
Works for me.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jay.
All right, and then also I got the information about the women's work release detention facility, I guess. Looks like we're three months out. So in my opinion, we need to start trying to hire people now. We've budgeted for the salary for this whole year. So I would like to go ahead and try to start hiring people. I don't want to hire all ten right now. But if I could get a, a few, maybe every month, that'll get us to where, when we open that place, we'll be up and running and we'll be able to stick people wherever we need to and it'd be good to go.
We're looking at June twenty-sixth completion date now.
That's what I heard.
And so they don't have to be trained in there. They, they were trained in the jail, right?
Yeah, I, I got seven females in the jail now that I'm gonna ship them over to the other building, so they'll be well-trained. We'll have to hire three more females. And then the seven males that are gonna work in this to take the female's place are the ones that I gotta try to hire. So it's gonna be a challenge. It may take three months to pull it off.
Do you have anything that resembles a candidate pool to choose from?
We've got a couple. We've got a couple of females and I think two males that are interested right now. But I wanna promote it on social media and in the newspaper, hopefully, and maybe we'll get some good candidates that will work out.
Okay. I'll move it along with the sheriff to start his hiring process. We have a motion by Dale Second-Matresi to allow the sheriff to begin hiring process for personnel for the women's in preparation for the opening of the women's work release facility. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes.
That's it.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks.
Surveyor Bill Mackey, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. County Attorney, do you have anything?
How do you know?
Okay. Mayor's with us today. Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone have any mail they want to share? How about anything, old business?
I had someone ask about the bench. What's, what, they wanted to know exactly what they're looking on as far as the bench, so you can maybe update.
Well, it's sitting out here in the hallway. Josh has been off sick. And waiting to catch him and John when they carry that thing out there and nail it down. Got their old, the rack and everything that goes on it. And I haven't seen Josh today. Do you know if Josh is back yet, Jay?
I do not.
Okay. He's been, he's been short on help. I'll mention one thing under old business. I got a message from the recorder this morning wanting to know if we had the job description for preservation of a clerk in that office done yet. And I told, explained to her, we'd had some discussion about it, but the job description itself really is not complete as of now. Because I know we wanted to make some adjustments in it. So I think she's kinda anxious to try to get started on that if we can agree on a job description. So you think maybe we could have that ready to go in a couple of weeks? Okay? I don't have anything else for old business. Somebody got anything in our new business? Okay. In our new business, do you want to mention the communication we got from Purdue about the weather station? Did you see, did you see that this morning? Wade, we, we got the communication from the people at Purdue, Purdue University about the weather station. And along with the, the contract agreement and everything. So since you've applied for a grant to pay for this and we're not gonna, we don't want to do anything with that contract until we hear that your grant has been approved and funded.
Right, I, I agree with that. We haven't got word from FEMA yet on whether we're gonna approve that brick grant or not. So there's really, I don't see any value in signing a, a contract with somebody when we really don't have the funds to pay for the weather station without the grant, so.
Well, we don't want to sign it now because we don't want to be responsible for that purpose.
I understand, yeah. So we're perfectly fine with that.
We're just gonna sit on that and wait and see what happens.
All right, hopefully we'll find out here before too long whether we're awarded or not. And I can bring it back to you all whenever we find that out, so.
Okay. Anybody got anything else in our new business? Is there any patron concerns? Anybody got anything? All that leaves is pay, claims and payroll. We have a motion by Dale Second-Matresi to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jay.
Did you, did you want both copies of this ordered the same?
Just one.
Just one? I can have this one back.
You've got a version that you're gonna sign going down right there.
I think that's the right one.
I think that's the right one. That concludes our agenda, unless we're forgetting anything. You forgetting anything, Tracy?
I had something I was gonna ask Jay, I almost forgot. Um, about the lease, the lease program, have you heard anything else on that?
I can't read. Let me get closer.
The lease program, or the people you're speaking with about leasing, have you got any more information for us on that?
On the trucks? No, they hadn't called me back yet.
Okay.
I figured it'd be the first of the month before they called me back.
Okay. And then you also gave us this contractor for chip sealing, that you, from the last meeting, you were gonna give them the information.
Yeah, yeah, I'm waiting on him to get back with me too, I left a message to him.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to check on that, thank you. That's it, for me.
Okay. Forgetting anything, Jay? All right, we're done. That's your...
Second bill.
We have a motion, Dale seconded by Tracy, to adjourn, all in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you all very much.